On September 24th. Are you there is a change to the agenda? Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? The head of this vote, Mr. Wilson, will you please read that?
To our consistent agenda, we're adding item 5 W resolution concerning remaining municipal budget for our tax collection fees. We're also adding item 5 X resolution to amend parks and recreation budget to reallocate funding. To our routing agenda, we are adding docket section for $62,390.80.
Now do you have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? The head of this vote? And I'd like to recognize Ms. Supervisor, Mr. Beverly Martin's in the house. Anyone? Thank you for joining us. We'll move on to the presentation agenda. Mayor for court?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask our friend and neighbor and supervisor, we've been doing some great things together. We've been doing some great things together. Especially when we talked about all this, they've always been most questions to us in our accounts to me and our supervisors. So if you want, you don't have to. If you want to tell us some things that we've recently done with the OIGs, this monetary situation. We had a high.
Oh, as you guys have been so great out there, we've got an agreement with the city, the county and the city of the outfield, which all happens to be in this recovery. We're very cooperative at this point. And so we're hiring a firm to help us figure out a way to recoup some of our losses that were caused by the spillway. It's just the beginning stage, so it's a $60,000 project that we're on. Whereas we're moving on to the big stage or the next one that will continue to split that. But I just want to say much I appreciate working with all we got because it's not like that in other parks and field. I'm very lucky that I have the two most supportive seats. My stupid in this side. And we got property tomorrow. It's balanced, we're looking to do it. No tax increase, no school tax increase up here or anything like that. So we did change that. Everything else is good, but we did kind of expect an increase in revenues next year because of reappraisal. So while expenses are not going up, we may actually increase in revenue as will the loss. But thank you so much for that challenge.
Thank you.
You can't forgive me. We've been, we've been trying to work, but we've been over the last, you know, some integration issues. I mean, we've done some things together, and we're still moving back down. And I think I figured it'd be up to you and your supervisor's support too. So thank you. All right, next up, I think you all received a significant, I want to thank Felix for being part of this. And we faced some of the allegations early on in 2016, and we pulled the trigger, you know, in FEMA, because I rolled things out to people way early on of some OIGs kind of intent, and it became FEMA's intent to look at the obligation, you know, totaling about $15 million. Well, this is significant. The sort of affirmation confirmation that, you know, this is wrong. MEMA is providing, we're just doing our second appeal. I want to thank everyone around for helping us put our case together. You know, now you've got time, FEMA approved these docket and these amounts. And there are a couple of things pointed out in this memorandum, and I think you all have a copy of our delegations in response to FEMA said this is unacceptable. And, you know, it took a village to put this together. So I thank everybody, our staff, you know, all our contractors, all of our, you know, I guess MEMA and FEMA, we've been meeting every other week. Walt knows we started doing this. We needed to be face to face, and we have. Councilman Tisdale's been there pretty much as we meet and understand that this is in the trench.
Approved these docket and these amounts. And there are a couple of things pointed out in this memorandum, and I think you all have a copy of our delegation's response to FEMA, say this is unacceptable. And, you know, it took a village to put this together. So I thank everybody, our staff, you know, all our contractors, all of our, you know, I guess MEMA and FEMA, we've been meeting every other week. Walt knows we started doing this. We needed to be face to face, and we have. Councilman Tisdale's been there pretty much as we meet and understand that this is in the trench, real kind of dollars. You know, if we had added $15 million to the budget, we'd have some issues, would you think? But anyway, this is a significant success, and I think, you know, it was not just here. It was in Washington. I think some of the folks, Keith Hurd especially, and Gerald and Felix kind of put the ribbon on this bow, and here we are. And it's a significant achievement. Again, a confirmation that this doesn't make sense all the way up the line. So we hope this has some meaning to the folks who are challenged every day up in, you know, the FEMA world. So I just, again, I just wanted to make note that this is a significant deal. And again, it makes you feel good that, you know, we're on the right track and that we're going to keep plugging away. We're going to roll this project out, you know, wrapping up the north phase and going into the south phase and doing, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, or dotting Is and crossing the Ts, whatever you want to say. But anyway, this is a real good deal, I think, that we can move forward and just complete this project. Okay, what else do I need to say? Frank Bardo, Frank Bardo will come up and kind of give us an update on the insurance situation. Thanks, Frank.
I've today went through this with the insurance committee last week with the administration and want to, before you have a pamphlet here, we do have an increase this year. We haven't realized an increase in some time on our, this is on all of our casualty lines and then our workers' comp as well. If we go ahead and flip over to page, page three kind of shows you how the program works. It's the all-lines aggregate. There's been no change in deductible limits or our loss fund has not increased or decreased. And so if we flip over to page four is what you really want to look at. You'll see on the first portion, that's the Brit London Syndicate, that is our all-lines aggregate carrier. We market that every year. Brit has the broadest coverage of all the carriers, and they were the only ones this year to provide an option for this. Below that, you'll see we have various other coverages that come up at the same time, your marine hole, your crime, excess workers' comp. The last three are required statutorily, and that's your loss control, your third-party administrator, and your self-insurance bond. There was a slight decrease in your hole coverage, and your hole coverage due to the nature of we've expanded some of our inter-local agreements where we respond further out than what we normally do, and so we increased the mileage where our vessels can go and be covered to 50 miles. So you did have a broader coverage on your whole policy, lower deductibles, the premium's down. But your overall premium is on the bottom, very bottom of page four. You have for all lines, your all-lines aggregate, your workers' comp, and everything else I just discussed, you had a $40,000 increase. And I wanted to show you, if you look above that, from 2010 to 2011 on down your annual costs, we're still well below our average over the same period of time as what we have been. The one other thing that I wanted to point out, and I think is great news for both our legal staff, the adjusters, and our employees, is if you turn to page eight, on your workers' compensation, that lower graph there, you'll see a significant decrease in your total claims, a very significant decrease in your claims closed. And you will always have in your last year, your most current year, open claims should be higher in 2018, 2019. One thing we talked about, currently we have a total of 60 claims, 40 claims open. Going, I went back historically, 2010, 2011, we had over 260 open claims at that time. So we are closing claims at a faster pace. We have fewer claims. So from a works' comp standpoint, we're doing very good. And what that, what I'm presenting to you is the fixed cost. That's the cost that we pay, that we know we're going to pay. The variable cost, which is the largest number, is the cost below our self-insured retention. That's what City of Biloxi pays. And so your fixed cost is up $40,000, but your variable costs are going to be down quite a bit if this trend continues. I did provide a very detailed loss report for the insurance committee as well as the administration. It goes in pretty good detail, and it's really not for public consumption because it has some sensitive information in it. If any of the other council members would like to take a look at that in greater detail, I know that Mr. Leonard goes over that with the department heads. And so we can do that at any time. I believe the insurance committee would like to do a bi-annual report in detail with those claims, and so we'll arrange that with the adjusters and the appropriate folks with that. So if I can answer any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Lawrence.
The one that we discussed, what can we put in place now? What can we put in place now to improve what we're doing? To look at that better, to stay on top of it on these claims and stuff? I said, what we need to do now, something added we can do, the administration, the council, the committee, I mean, what can we do next?
We can do, I mean, we, I think the claims review meeting would be very helpful. Also, if we can, if you want that report drilled down department by department, from a standard of how y'all are comparing with your peers, you and I've talked about Biloxi is better than their peers as far as the claims. And from a GL, so we do review claims throughout the year, and if we see a trend, we will notify the departments, our loss control department will. And I know that both the fire chief and police chief have worked very well with our loss control when needed. There is no trend that we see with the city as far as some of the claims that we have are more accidents. It's not, you know, we're not negligent in one area or another. So, but I will provide you the report that you requested today, and if anybody else would like it, department by department, from a comp standpoint of where the claims are coming from and how much those claims are. And we can go back as far as you'd like to, so you can see historical compared to today.
As every time we have an increase, like this year it's $40,000.
Yes, sir.
We always have, next year we'll drop $25,000 or $30,000. It'll be lower. So we've got to make sure we stay on top of that thing where it will be lower next year. It's kind of gone like that, goes up and down, up and down. So the more we can do to look at it, pay attention to it, like you said, to all the departments, it's just better for the city, being insurance, because we are the insurance provider pretty much in this system, you know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate you meeting with the insurance committee, Frank. And one of the things that we also discussed that I make, I want to make sure we cover is to meet with maybe Ken, because I think previously you met with Scott to go over some procedural issues that may help us close some of the cases.
Yes.
So they don't sit on the books for a long time and
Yes, sir.
and incur some administrative expenses that maybe are unnecessary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Frank Bordeaux? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate that news. That concludes my report. Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to departmental reports. Ms. Matranga?
So currently, right now, we are on Forest Avenue, south of Division. That's what this picture is. We've installed the base course of asphalt, the curbing, and right now we're finishing the sidewalks. The sidewalks on Forest should be finished today or tomorrow. We own Forest north of Division. We're still working on the sewer and the storm drain north of the Keesler Gate. We've installed the road base on Forest up to Park Circle. We've installed the road base up to Park Circle, and today, that's what this picture is, we're laying out for the curbing. Tomorrow, we'll pour the west side of the road up to Park Circle. Then the following day, form up the east side of the road. Then the day after that, pour the curbing on the east side of the road up to Park Circle. Next week, we anticipate installing the base course of asphalt on Forest up to Park Circle. Once the sewer and storm drain work are complete north of the Keesler Gate, then we'll move the road crew back in there to install the road base, curb, and base course of asphalt and such. On Benaki, Thelma, and Esposito, all of the storm drain has been completed. We just finished removing all the old storm drainage, and I just wanted to show y'all, it was a lot of big storm drain. But anyways, that's just, that's just a portion of what we've removed. We are currently finishing the water and sewer services to the homes. This is taking us a good deal longer than we anticipated because on the entire east side of the street, it's what we call flipped services. That means currently the sewer services are tied in at the rear of the homes. Now, the new service has to be brought from the rear of the homes to the new sewer main in the street, and we're having to do a lot of hand digging. We've done some hand digging in the past over there on, I want to say Frank P. Corso, north of, off of Porter, west of Porter, north of Division. We've done some flipped services, but they were really shallow, very shallow. Some of these we're having to hand dig 10 to 15 feet because we can't get any machines in between the houses, whether it be a big oak tree, air conditioning units, travel trailers, there's all kinds of things. And that's on probably about 10 to 12 of the homes over there. So anyways, it's just taken us a good deal longer. We brought in another crew. It should probably take us another two to three weeks to finish the services over there. Once those services are finished, then we can bring the road crew back over there, start installing the road base, and put down the asphalt. We continue to install the sewer and the storm drain on Cuevas, and we're building storm drain structures. On Fayard, we're installing sidewalks and driveways. We moved our road crew to Raynor, north of Division. We just dug into the road there today. So that'll take us a few weeks to get the road base in, and we'll just be following it. We'll be working concurrently with curbing, sidewalks, all of that moving north on Raynor. Now, this is, just to kind of give you an idea, I mean, you see, like, we have to get through that little area right there in between the fence and the air conditioning unit, so a little mini excavator won't get in between there. And then this, we're on Raynor. We are, we have a sidewalk crew on Main Street, north of Elder, finishing up the sidewalks. They're then going to move to Parker. We're working on landscaping, on spanner, then moving to Crusis, then Elder, Main, Walker, tying up all that area. We're working with, ooh, we're working with the community, Morehouse, with their sidewalks, fencing, all of that. That's taken some time. That's why if you look down Walker, it kind of appears that the sidewalks aren't complete, but we're just working with them on that. We have striped all of the streets, all of the main streets east of Lee. We're installing fencing, final fencing in SXSN and DIV 1 and 2. That's primarily all the streets to the east of Lee Street and Nichols. We have a list of items to get to. I know on Friday, I'm probably going to have another ride around to where we can ride around and see all the other fences that need to be installed east of Corvette up to Lee. We continue to work on some punchless items, installing street signs, and we've also been making a big push with the weed killing, grass mowing, and all of that stuff. This is a pretty picture. And that's all I got.
Questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Two quick questions. On Circle Park on east side, you never did ever put paving in front of those two homes there? Was there some reason for that?
We have to finish tying in the water right there. So once this work gets complete that we're doing now, we'll be able to finish tying in the water, and then we'll be able to close that section up.
Yeah, that's in front of the house that right goes to the fence.
Yes, sir.
And on Benaki, I know you said before, one of y'all would have thought actually laying the asphalt on Benaki. Did y'all have more problems there or something?
That's, it just took a lot longer to install the sewer services because of the hand digging. And so that's, because we had anticipated going to Benaki first before Raynor to install the road base, but it was just, we couldn't get out of the way fast enough. The road crew wouldn't have been able to keep up with, the sewer service crew wouldn't have been able to keep up with the road crew. So it made more sense to put them on Raynor and then bring them back to Benaki. So in about three weeks, the road crew will be back on Benaki. It'll probably take them about two weeks to install the road base, then curbing and asphalt. It'll probably be about six, seven weeks before we see asphalt going down on Benaki.
That's what I needed. Thank you.
Mr. Gaines?
Along with all of that fencing, because I had a whole list of fencing that was missing or forgotten. So I'm glad to hear that fencing is about to go up. A lot of the driveways are still not done, and I think I put quite a few of them down. I get a lot of calls about driveways. And the biggest thing is landscaping the yard on Strawberry Lane in particular is one of them that probably about four, three to four feet of their driveway were dug, I mean of their front yard was dug out and dirt not put back. And it's been that way probably about a month or two, almost two months. So it'll be nice to start getting some of that stuff closed up. And one of my biggest concern, as always, I still think manpower is a big issue. I mean, if you got a few workers in there, it's not going to get done. And right now, looking at the way the billing is set up, I mean, we don't see it till sometime next year. And, you know, again, our people have been waiting a long time. So it'd be nice if either you guys pick it up or even, I would even ask the mayor if we may need to look at bringing in more contractors to help with the cement work, the sidewalks. If you guys can't get to it and can't do it, then we need to go ahead and get somebody else because, you know, I've been living that way for five years, and it's small stuff. But, you know, but of course, you don't have the crew to do it. And that's killing our community and killing us coming back. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Matranga. Thanks. Counsel report, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I tell you something, thanks. I'd like to call Chief Miller, he comes to give the report. I never think he goes Saturday. I was in the National Plaza, and y'all had y'all old parents and children and kids. You know, we do a good crowd, I pray for you.
Yeah, everything went very well. We have probably about the same crowd we usually have. The way we measure that is they come and go all day, you know, from, all day from 10 till 2. So we started off with 1,000 t-shirts, and we probably had about 100 t-shirts left yesterday that we were giving out to the community. So we know we had almost 1,000 people there. We had a couple of different pizza places were there, the military was there, fire department came and supported. Everything was free. Everybody seemed to enjoy it, so I think it went very, very well.
It's always a good event. It shows how well y'all do on all equipment, and the kids like that, you know?
Yeah, they do.
They get excited about that.
My grandkids liked it, so I know the rest of them did too. But thank you.
Saturday night, we had the same fault. We went from the National Plaza across the street to the Seaford Museum. Had a big crowd. And our emcee was Kenny Clavon. He's going to be famous now. He's going to be in CB all the time, calling out numbers one after another. Good night, there wasn't a Kenny. It was a great night. Sorry I didn't pull your ticket though. And we come in the third, like everybody didn't win. We come in third. We didn't win nothing. The other thing we have is the Bucks Bay Area Chamber is once again being nominated for that Keesler Force Base Community, which they won all these. And I thank anybody who wants to send a letter, support them. That was a big thing last year when they won that. That was pretty huge. So it's good for the community. So it's good, and they do a good job at the Bay Chamber, and they tied in big time with Keesler, so that works out well. So if anybody would like to send a letter in to the mayor, to the Bucks Bay Chamber, whatever, supporting that, to show what they do for the community is good. Only last thing I have business-wise is in this room, I was going to bring it out in a meeting about charter boats in the harbor. They're always been set at 20. It was 18, went to 20. So my recommendation is to keep the boats where we have them. If we want to fill out slips, then put pleasure boats in there, charter them $6 a foot, not three, for the charter boats. So if we want to make money, let's go after pleasure boats. There's 20 boats in there right now, doing well. Okay, bringing in more charter boats in there, all you'll do is affect 20 businesses in Bucks Bay that's been in Bucks Bay. So I just want to see how far that goes, and I'll be paying attention to that, because that's part of my ward and the small crab harbor, and I got to protect the 20 people that's in there already. Thank you.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes, I won't mention anymore about the construction work. I think I beat that drum pretty good. I want to thank you, Mayor, for allowing me and Gerald to go up there to DC to help out on this project. We had great reviews. Just want to kind of footstomp that. Keith Hurd played an instrumental role in us getting to all of our legislators. We're talking Blazo, Bennett Thompson, which is over the FEMA, Cindy Hyatt Smith, and Roger Wicker. So it was very instrumental. We had a couple of great meetings, talking with them, and they sent a strong, strong letter. So I just want to emphasize, that's a strong letter. And not only that, they also emphasized that we should be getting project, project money for overseeing the project. So we need to kind of push that issue also, because it's an opportunity for us to at least come out the right way in this project. The other thing, last night, had a chance to hang out with our great civil rights icon, Reverend Andrew Young, Ambassador Young, back in the Jimmy Carter administration, one a guy who was there with Dr. King, and that's one of the last of our civil rights legends. So the mayor and I, we got a chance to hang out with him and had a great time last night. And the remainder of my time, I want to give it to Mr. Jimmy Spears, who had some concerns about the reverse auction. So I wanted, he has a business that is in War II, and I like to give my War II businesses some props.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Everybody received a packet that I dropped off yesterday, I believe. And I really just, kind of just want to give my opinion on what they call reverse auction bidding. The B newsletter, which you all have given a copy of, it went out for reverse auction bid, and that is basically where you get a clock for five minutes, you bid on one item. You can bid $10 as an example, and I can bid nine, and you can hold off to two seconds. Plug your number in, don't hit send yet. When it hits two seconds, hit send, bid's over. Move on to the next subject. I firmly believe that is a archaic 1975 way of doing business. It doesn't even give you the opportunity to see where your other bidder might even be able to go as low as. I do realize, I believe it might be a state mandated thing, I believe, if I'm not mistaken that. That doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it wrong, but it doesn't make it right. And I just, I just feel that with everything that's going on with the bid that came out bid that came out and the fact that it's a little confusing where it says you must deliver this twenty-five thousand books to a Biloxi post office, well, in fact, you have to deliver it to three. You literally take twenty-five thousand books out of nine skids, drop them down here to the post office, check them in for an hour and a half, put what you need back on the truck, which is about twenty-one thousand pieces, take them to the Ibraville, check them all over again, drop off what you need and then go to West Biloxi and drop it off again. And if you don't make it in time, you gotta go pick them all back up because they have to be dropped in one day. And that is not really on here to an extent. Uh, I think that that's maybe a little misleading. Uh, I believe that we started today's meeting as an example with the problems we have with algae and the problem in our water, how many millions of dollars we've lost, where in March, Mississippi Power in Knight Abbey showed our new earth, more earth-friendly way of printing, LED, as opposed to all the toxins in the current printing system that, I also have some of that as well. And I suggested that we go with this, especially now with everything that's going on in July. And I got a response, basically it says, "We'll get back to you." That's what the email says. Um, more than ever, we need to probably take care of our area. The press that we now have, the LED press, more earth-friendly, more earth-friendly paper, more cost, higher quality. You all have two issues in your hand that I stapled. Just putting the reds next to each other shows you how better the quality is. It's, it's more earth-friendly. And, and I don't know really where I'm gonna go with this, but I would like to hopefully realize that this is a Biloxi product, going to Biloxi people from a Biloxi printer. We've won some of the bid, we won, we lost some of the bid. Uh, I just really don't think it's the correct way to do, to do this type of bidding. I know that Vincent has done an amazing job at selling ads, selling ads. I know that I made a few phone calls to get the ads in here too. And it's a team effort, it's a city effort. And I would just maybe think we could rethink this down the road. Because I think in the long run, we're gonna lose. We as in Biloxi. That's it. Any questions? All right. Thank y'all for the time.
I do, I do have a question, if it's, if it's appropriate here related to this. And, and that is, and, and I know this because I have a relative who was not getting B news. And that's when I learned, and I talked with Vincent and he arranged, I guess by speaking with Mr. Spears, to be sure that at this apartment complex, and I suspect other residences or complexes, to see that they receive B news because they were not receiving B news. And that's because they are in city limits of Biloxi, but they're on Saint Martin mail route, which, and so I guess what I'm getting to is, we've got another company that has this bid, they, they're gonna start this contract, but what about these places where I think those beat, the B news, basically you've hand-delivered that, so who, who does that? Is that gonna be the contractor because it wasn't in the specs? Or is it gonna be somebody in the city? I mean, it's time and money and services lost if somebody's gotta do that.
There is a post, there is one or two routes that have Biloxi and Saint Martin in it. As much as that doesn't make sense, that's what it is. Ibraville is an example. So, we drive hundred, two hundred to Ibraville every week or every month. We take some down to the condominiums on the beach, we take some over, people just don't get them. Vincent'll email me on Sunday and said, "Some guy sent this." So, we drive it to them. They're in my car right now. And it, it, it's just a service of being a Biloxi. I know I'm from Chicago, but I love this place with all my heart. And I know these three over here know that, but, um, yeah, that, that's a service that we do and it, it's the cost of doing business.
And maybe the new contractor's willing to do that, but I don't know if they are or not. If they're not, we gotta get B news out.
How'd you do it from Louisiana?
Then, somebody's gotta get it to somebody's door.
Yeah, a couple of comments. First of all, there, uh, the reverse auction is not an, an option for us. It's a, it's a requirement, it's a state mandated requirement. Uh, it's un, it's uncomfortable for us, but if, in the kind, certain kinds of services, we're required to, to use that process. Um, secondly, there is no such thing as a local preference law in the state of Mississippi. So, contrary to what others have believed and said to me, there is no guarantee, there is no automatic, you know, Biloxi three percent or that sort of thing. There is a requirement to match another state's preference if, if it's appropriate, but it wasn't appropriate in this case. In the case of the delivery of the, of the material, that the delivery to the three post offices was not in the requirement, the way the requirement was written, it probably should have been written that way because what Jimmy is saying is that he bid what he knew to be the requirement, even though it wasn't written. And the other guy didn't bid that requirement to deliver to three post offices. But after the, after the bids were awarded, and remember, um, if it wasn't clear, there are different size publications, a sixteen page, a twelve page, a twenty page, a twenty-four page. And depending the way the bids went, uh, were received, um, the Louisiana company bid lower on the smaller edition, on the larger editions, whereas the, the local Biloxi printer, we all love and know and love, bid, uh, less expensive on the smaller editions. So, it's a split. So, that means that next month in October, if it is a sixteen-page production, it'll go locally. If it's a twenty-page or a twenty-four page, it'll go to Louisiana. But the re, they both, they, they've required, they, they, even though the requirement was, was not in, uh, the RFP to deliver to three post offices, both Jimmy's company and the other company agreed to that condition. So, we have an, we have an equal situation there.
Right. I'm just thinking, for little, little things like that, I mean, there's no way, there may be no way that y'all would know or we would know, but...
But if, if, if these additional, um, capabilities such as the, uh, high-quality color printing and or, and or, uh, printing that is more economic or environmentally, um, acceptable, if we can write that into a requirement in the future, we'll do that.
Right, and, and that was gonna be my next question. How do we ensure that these little things that just unique in the process of getting it printed and delivered, I mean, we wouldn't know that, Mr. Spears would know that, Vincent became aware of it when I became aware of it. But those are the kinds of things I think that would need to be...
Yeah, our lesson learned is to, uh, do a better job on writing the requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you, Jimmy.
I have a couple of comments.
Me too.
Jimmy, uh, first of all, thank you very much. You do a great service for our community and, uh, your quality of work and is, uh, goes without question. But I wanna clarify a couple of things. So, Mississippi companies, there is not a law that requires us to choose Mississippi-based companies?
There's not.
There isn't. So, secondly, it sounds like now that we do know that there can be some more parameters, the next time this comes up for a renewal, uh, for, for bidding, I'm, I'm assuming this is an annual contract, or one year?
It's an annual contract that awards a, a month at a time based on the size of the, of the product that's to be presented.
But they want to bid fair and square, they have it for one year, we will not rebid until one year? Is that correct?
They have two, they have twenty and twenty-four page, I have twelve and sixty.
Okay, so that's how y'all, y'all won that.
And, and, and unless there's, now, if there's unacceptable performance on the, on the part of either of the printers, we throw it out and start over.
Understood. And there, there is no verbiage that if they cannot deliver to every Biloxi household, that's not in there anywhere?
It's not in the requirement for either company.
So, going forward, if I understood the conversation, we'll, we'll kinda introduce that in future bids.
And, and it's, it's a, it's a mutually understood requirement, but not in writing for both printers.
Okay.
For this year.
All right. Thank you for educating us in, on the issues.
Not for you. For Mike, there, there is a thing in the state where you have to do five percent, but you have to write that in there. It is. You gotta do stuff within the state or within the city, and you can write that into those bidding process. So, if you done it with all the rest with the FEMA, we done with everybody and brother. So, you can write that in there. And there's no reason to, to accept.
We don't agree, I, I do not, I do not agree that we can make up the law.
No, no, I'm, I'm, not, it's, you can write that in there.
There is no law about local preference.
You can write and protect the state and the city. And you can write that in part of the bid. You can do that. Now, Peter, can you do that? Not?
I'll double check.
All right. The other thing is, if this is the two different types of quality, how could you accept this one here that's so much different? Did y'all get to see this before? I mean, we, we seen them today. I mean, there's a big difference in these two layouts completely. And I mean, so we accepting the lowest bid just because it's the lowest bid, not the best quality.
If this were professional services.
So, what options we have? We have to do this for a year or for a month? Peter? These are legal questions.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't have what you have, but I mean, I think we have to see what it looks like over the next few months. And it depends on what size the B news is. I mean, I think once the, a lot of the Oscarinda maps come out, we may be back down to sixteen pages anyway. But, I mean, there should be some consistency in the product. And so, I, I could see a potential issue if you had a, uh, something that's all bleeding one month and the next month it's nice and fresh. So, I mean, I think we just have to, at this point, at this point, the bid was on the docket, it's been awarded, and, and we wanna play it out and see, see how it goes.
So, we have no options here?
I don't think you have any real options with, I mean, I don't think you have any real options at this point. I mean, other than just trying to undo everything and subjecting ourselves to a potential complaint from the other fellow.
Is the verbi, I'm sorry, Councilman, but is the verbiage lowest and best in the bid? It's not, it's not in this particular bid, lowest and best? Is it? Or does anybody know? Anybody know?
It says, "The city reserves the right to reject any and all bids and waive to any informa, any informality in the proposed accepted."
There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hmm?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Mr. Dimming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, a few questions. I know I asked about Eisenhower Drive, um, the...
We've, we've sent correspondence, uh, email correspondence to CSX in Jacksonville, asking them to look at that crossing. That's a CSX problem because it's on the crossing, not in the road to, up to the crossing.
I mean, I'm happy to go out and take, I'll go out and take some pictures and send them. I do that periodically.
I've got some that have been sent to us.
But I know they, CSX will, moves with all the speed of a glacier. So, I mean, I'm not holding my breath. Uh, the second thing, Pops Ferry Bridge issues. I know Sunday it was down for about an hour and I know that happens occasionally. I know some work was done recently, but that was on the underwater cable, not to be confused with the submarine cable.
It's, it's related to the submarine under, underwater cable.
Okay.
Actually, and that was a pretty expensive project, but we're gonna tweak it.
Yeah, we, we actually have a change order that'll be coming to y'all, hopefully, um, hoping the next council meeting. When we did the submarine cable, we changed a lot of the electronics in the bridge. So, we went from, um, an analog system to a digital system. Well, the digital system is much more, um, sensitive to little, um, issues in the overall electrical system, and that's what keeps happening. That's why we're having issues. It's in a limit switch. I'm not electrical, electrical engineer, so I don't understand all that, but it's in the limit switch. And that's one of the things that's gonna be in the change order that's coming to y'all, so we're working to fix it.
So, there appears to be a fix and it's in the process?
Yes, we're working towards it.
Okay. Um, thank you, Christie. The third thing is just Causeway Park. I know the eatery, sometimes I see people down around a table under a tent. Is, is that eatery open? I've never seen a kayak at the rental thing. Is that operative and...
The bait shop operator was given a cure notice. He did not, he, they, they did not cure the deficiencies. We have terminated them, they're cleaning their gear out. And we'll, in the process of doing an RFP to, um, advertise for another operator.
And just to be...
In the meantime, the park is open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And, you know, there's no issues with people getting in the park. The park is open. The problem is, we, we just don't have the, an operator for the bait shop right now.
Gotcha, okay. So, we'll be doing RFPs again or whatever?
Should...
And just, just to be...
I, I think Peter remembers the date, when, when the proposals are due.
For the folks at home, he said something. You didn't hear that, but he said something.
I think we're shooting for, uh, uh, the bids are in, I think, uh, middle of next month, trying to get operational again December first.
Okay, and just to be clear, reverse auction is not involved in that process at all?
That's right.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Christie. Thank you, Mike.
Guess I'm out of Michigan.
Okay. You up?
Yep. Um, also, I'd just like to reiterate what George said about the Maritime Seafood and Industry Museum, uh, ten thousand dollar drawdown. It was really a terrific night. Uh, really appreciate everyone who, uh, who supported our great museum. Uh, we saw Dixie Newman on a ticket. Uh, I think we saw George Lawrence on a couple of tickets. Um, we even saw David Fayard on one of the tickets. So, George said he had some influence on that. Um, but all the, all the seafood industry names, uh, Skametta and Kalu's, and when you call them out, you, I don't know if I made a bunch of friends, but I made five good friends when I pulled the last five tickets out. But, uh, we still had a terrific night, it was really good. Uh, shout out to Robin Cron, um, shout out to Ken Bush. Uh, they work so hard and put so many hours and blood, sweat and tears in, into those efforts, and it really, really pays off. Um, I'd like to remind everyone, uh, the Biloxi High School football Indians are four and zero. And they play their crosstown rivals this week, the De Ibraville Warriors. And, uh, we need a big turnout for that game, so, uh, put on your Biloxi red. I saw Supervisor Martin, uh, with her Biloxi red on, and, uh, I'm, I'm, we really appreciate that. Um, a couple of other things, Public Works, uh, thank you for the Kimbrough Drive, jumped on that real quick. Uh, already heard from five or six of the residents who came out here and did it this week. City of Biloxi Public Works came out and did it, and they really appreciate that. Um, Pelican Bayou also, uh, appreciate you jumping on the drainage issue over there. Now, we have another issue. Before, their lawnmower would get stuck in their, uh, backyard. Now, they gotta water their backyard, uh, because we got all the water off of it. So, uh, I reminded them, their water bill may go up, but at least they can use their backyard now.
That's good for us.
But thank you, uh, for taking care of that issue. It seems to be working. Um, and then one other issue that, that's been ongoing, Brenda Skametta, uh, as, as you know, she asked me to kinda highlight this in the council report today. If somebody can look at it, there's the other drainage issue in Malpus Landing, phase two or three. Uh, it's created some issues on her garage, and she says the foundation is failing. I haven't actually went out there and looked at it, took any pictures, but I'm just asking if engineering or Public Works can get out there and see if there's a remedy, uh, for that or what we can tell Ms., Ms. Skametta. She was also at the drawdown, uh, the other night, and she, she said, "I don't mean to talk business, but we're gonna talk some business." And I wanted to clear that and get that off the, off the, the thing. Uh, and then last, uh, appreciate your, uh, your report, Supervisor. Uh, I wanna remind you, I know we got some funds coming back to the county and that sounds good, but also the abatements are coming off, so that's also gonna be some new money, uh, for the supervisors. And I hope y'all kinda calculate that in, in your future budgets so that we can do some wonderful projects together. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And so, we're gearing up for our huge Halloween event in Hiller Park. We're looking for vendors. In the past, we've had about forty-five vendors and six thousand people showed up.
sounds good, but also the abatements are coming off, so that's also gonna be some new money, uh, for the supervisors, and I hope y'all kinda calculate that in, in your future budgets so that we can do some wonderful projects together. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And so we're gearing up for our huge Halloween event in Hiller Park. We're looking for vendors. In the past, we've had about forty-five vendors, and six thousand people showed up, so it's great advertisement, and if you're ready and willing, contact me at Newman.Dixie@gmail.com. And now we'll move on to the public agenda, where we have citizen comments. Each citizen is allowed three minutes each to speak. We have forty-five minutes allotted total. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Don't be scared. Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone in the back?
How about somebody at the table? Could I say something? Just a, just as a reminder to you all that Nathan Barrett was not here today because his son is in surgery as we speak, a rather serious injury at a basketball game, uh, this last couple of days, so that's why he's not with us. Keep his son in your prayers.
Amen. Okay. Citizen comments are now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Ms. Lucy, will you please read Ordinance A?
Ordinance to approve a zoning change for five parcels of land, properties identified as nine nine, excuse me, nine three three eight, nine three seven eight, and two unaddressed parcels fronting on West Oaklawn Road.
Do you have a motion?
I'll motion it second.
Motion by Mr. Glavin, second by Mr. Tisdale. Being a first reading, we'll move on to Resolution B.
Resolution to grant conditional use approval for short-term rental for property identified as five fifty-one Howard Avenue.
Do you have a motion?
I'm, I move the planning commission recommendation to approve it.
Got a motion by Mr. George Lawrence and a second by Mr. Demming. Any discussion, Lawrence?
No, I got Jerry Krill, they went through all the process, everything was done right, so we have no problem. It's all under the conditional use. Correct?
Okay. Mr. Demming, any discussion?
No. I have to go.
Any other discussion? You have some words to say?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm Bruce Brookshire. I live at five 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 Howard Avenue, next door to this property. I need to give you a little history, so you'll understand where I'm coming from. This property was built by a man named Lou Eleanor Bowen. He was a bar pilot. He brought ships in and out of the sandbars in the late eighteen hundreds. He built the property at five five one Howard Avenue prior to building five 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 Howard Avenue. His family lived at five five one while they were building five five five. Now, as a bar pilot, Pilot Major Bowen, he imported all sorts of items, and the slate roofs on each house were identical. We didn't know there was anything wrong with the roof until Hurricane Katrina arrived, and two of our chimneys were blown over, creating holes in the roofs. And then we discovered that we had an asbestos roof, and we were not allowed to repair our roof. The whole thing had to be replaced at a cost of about forty-five thousand dollars. Since then, we have done a number of different repairs, but, uh, when Pilot Major Bowen was building these houses, he obtained a slate, we believe, from Europe, because it was there in the late eighteen hundreds. It didn't really actually come to the United States until nineteen oh four, if I understand correctly. And a slate roof is supposed to have a life of approximately thirty to fifty years, and then it begins to decompose and disintegrate and that sort of stuff. Well, the, uh, slate roof, in case you're not aware of it, the asbestos slate roof causes mesothelioma, asbestososis, and of course, people die from it. Uh, the life expectancy for someone who develops mesothelioma, about ninety-two percent die within five years. So, the roof that we had removed, uh, was identical to the one at five five one. He built both homes and used the same roofing material on both roofs. So what I'm trying to say is, the roof on five five one is approximately a hundred and twenty years or more old. It's been repaired six or eight times. It's quite easy to see if you look down on the roof, like we do from our home every day. And there is an asbestos felt, I believe, that goes underneath the roof. You can see the black streaks around this home, where the asbestos felt, I believe, is leaking. Now, uh, my understanding of the law is, 'cause I've spoken to a few attorneys, that the owner of the property has the legal right to rent the property, but at the same time, they're supposed to advise the renter or leaser of the property that they could possibly die from inhaling asbestos from the roof or anything within the property. And so you're looking at a situation, in my opinion, that the city council should adopt a resolution to put a legend on any leasing agreement or renters agreement that these people might put forth, whereby they are warned of the, uh, potential health hazard, and the property owner, if they do not do this, then they're liable for physi, physical, medical expense and/or civil damages. So, it would seem to me that the city of Biloxi would want to protect its reputation by requiring a document when anyone rents one of these homes, especially this home, so that there would be no liability for the city and its reputation would be protected by producing a document of this sort. No, I mean, it is a health hazard.
Mr. Jerry, do you have any comment or anything?
Now, the, my understanding is, on this asbestos and mesothelioma is, of course, that it has to disintegrate, and it has to, uh, slate has to decompose for the fibers to be blown into the air. And, of course, you know, it's a hundred and twenty years old, and if it's supposed to have a life expectancy of fifty years, then it seems evident to me that the roof should be replaced, or at least people should be warned about it when they might be leasing the property.
Okay.
Bring Jerry up.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Jerry Krill, will you, he's over community development, and he can give us a comment?
Was any of this brought up, Jerry, at the hearing?
Uh, yes, sir. He, he did bring up the case at the hearing, but the planning commission went ahead and voted to approve the request. Many of the older houses in all cities have asbestos. Uh, there's nothing wrong with asbestos. It's a very durable product, unless you break it up and make it friable. If you break it up to where there are fibers, that's where there's a danger. And there are two diseases associated with asbestos, which is something that you can, can get from the fibers, and then mesothelioma, which is a combination disease where you have asbestos, which are also a smog. That's for the, uh, I'm not sure about the roof repairs that he's talking about. A homeowner has the right to repair the roof on their structure. Now, the way that we deal with, uh, with asbestos issues is, we have our application that if you're going to do a demolition or anything that would disturb that asbestos, have to notify MDEQ and Jackson, because they're the regulatory body on these things. And if there's something about this house that, that, uh, Mr. Brookshire believes is gonna cause friable asbestos fibers, then he can contact MDEQ. But, uh, asbestos siding, asbestos roofing is perfectly safe, as long as it remains in a solid form. Uh, there are a number of roofs. There's a lot of siding all throughout East Biloxi where it's on there, and it can be on there from, from now on. Uh, it can even, there are other methods. You can encapsulate it. You can go over it, cover it with something to protect it, to keep it from breaking up into fibers, but, uh, I don't see that that's a danger to anyone, uh, coming here to stay at a short-term rental, so.
So you don't feel like there's a problem? Would y'all discuss that at the hearing? Y'all brought all this up at the hearing, you discussed that? You feel there's no problem?
No.
Somebody renting it to somebody else, as far as the landowner?
No, sir. That's, this is the first time that's ever come up. The, uh, the planning commission, uh, I don't know what their educational background is in, uh, in dealing with asbestos, but, uh, they didn't ask any questions about it, and there were a number of neighbors that came out to support the request that, that live around this house.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, you mentioned if the asbestos becomes friable, that's when it's a hazard, and if it's, I'm, I'm assuming if it's up on a roof, how would it be disturbed? Well, if somebody's up there working or checking something, or I guess if it's damaged or whatever, but, but even then, you, you would have to have somebody examine that to see if it's friable.
That's correct.
But typically, and I don't know how many homes have asbestos roofs, I would imagine there's still a few, of course, very few in East Biloxi, since a lot of those structures are gone from the hurricane. But also, that could be remedied by encapsulating it, couldn't it?
Yes, sir. It could.
So if, if it was determined that there was friable asbestos by the owner, if the owner was so inclined, or if MDEQ said you have to do something with the roof, then the owner has the option of replacing the roof, or it could be encapsulated-
That's correct.
-with, with something, so that the, um, asbestos is no longer friable. But the, the key issue with asbestos, not that I'm an expert, 'cause I'm not, is, is it friable? Because that's, if it's windborne or whatever, that's when it becomes an issue. But, but encapsulation is always an option, I think.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just for the record, um, you know, before you passed in it is, you had, you know, and I understand the process, but you've had someone to check it out already? Had someone to go out there and check it out and look?
No, sir. We didn't check it out, but we will. I mean, you know, we'll go take a look at it. Uh, this is the first time that there's been any mention about something leaking there, and, uh, I don't know what leaking would do, uh, to, uh, chris, when, when asbestos is in its solid form, it's called crisatile, and as long as it is crisatile and not friable, it's safe. Uh, leaking, I, I've never heard of that, making crisatile asbestos become friable, but, uh, you know, for the, for the sake of argument, I'll, I'll take a look at it. I did get some training in asbestos removal and disposal, and I can go take a look at it and see.
Yeah, just for safety purposes.
And so are you the, because I suspect we have to have a trained employee on this asbestos issue, that, that's educated periodically?
Well, actually, we don't have to have one. Again, uh, MDEQ is the regulatory body, and if the, if the city, for example, was gonna be tearing down houses, like the ones on Division Street, we would have to call DEQ, notify them, and have them come down and look at those houses to determine whether or not it's gonna be a regulated demolition and a regulated disposal. But homeowners have some exemptions from those regulations. Cities do not. Uh, homeowners have some regulations about it. Uh, with the removal, the, the disposal would still have to take place at a regulated landfill.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions, comments? Sorry, you should've spoken to her and said, "comments." Any other questions, comments? Anything else? All in favor? Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? That was unanimous.
I'll move second.
Question by Mr. Glavin, second by Mr. Glavin. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I, I'm unfamiliar with this, uh, on the consent agenda, item five, five? Can somebody explain that one a little bit in detail? Five, or V, I'm sorry, V. Five V. The Roman symbol for five.
Building we're sitting at, building we're sitting at, uh, as you know, is in children's age.
V.
V.
V is in victory?
V. V is in victory.
Okay.
Uh, V is in volio.
This deals with, uh, it's a little bit of a complicated history, but it's kinda laid out in the resolution. This is, uh, one of the parcels that we are, uh, in the process of negotiating to get clear title, uh, near the Forest Division, uh, intersection. The, uh, the landowner, uh, we've agreed on the price, and they're willing to proceed, but there is an old, uh, tax lien on the property from two thousand eleven, and it is from a special assessment that the city put on in two thousand eleven that went on the tax rolls in two thousand twelve. Uh, to clear that up, there's a procedure. The county, a lot of times the county will declare a tax sale void for lack of notice to the proper owner. Uh, the county declares tax sales void. A lot of times, something may get sold for taxes, and it may be city on property, and then they go in and void the tax sale, and they will refund the money to the tax purchaser. What we have here, the special assessment that was on, on this property that was, went through a tax sale, and this fellow paid five thousand dollars, uh, the, the notices on the tax sale through the county, those were defective. The owner has to get actual notice. There's exhibits shown that the owner, the letters that went to the owner were returned, so he didn't get notice. So what we're asking to do here is to declare that a special assessment we did in two thousand twelve, we're asking that to be set aside. We're gonna ask the county to set the tax sale aside. We're gonna refund that tax purchaser his money back, and then that will allow us to proceed with the correct owner and get clear title to the property.
Well, so the, uh, special assessment will be, like, waived completely?
Well, the special assessment was actually to tear down a couple of structures that were, that were there in two thousand eleven.
Which was done?
That was done, and the city paid that in two thousand eleven.
And the current property owner or whoever has gotta pay that, right? Normally?
Well, he didn't pay it, but his, his argument would be, he didn't get notice of it, and so he should not have been assessed it. Somebody else paid it through a tax purchase, and it's, uh, it's sort of the law of tax sales and tax purchasers and voiding tax sales, there's a lot of statutory-
This wasn't a reverse auction or anything?
It was not. It was not.
All right.
We, but we did interface with the county on this, got the best way to do it, and, uh, Charlene Romer, who's handling the title searches for the city, and we, we agreed this is the way to proceed. We're gonna ask the county to set aside the tax sale. He will be refunded that, that money probably out of one of our future, one of our future settlements with the county, one of our future monthly payments from the county. They'll probably back off five thousand dollars from what we receive in ad valorem as part of our inter-local collections every month.
And may I ask this? How, how long ago did we remove the buildings or structures? How, how long ago was that?
Two, two thousand eleven.
All right, that doesn't make sense to me, that he would say, "I'm not noted, and I never knew about it," or, "It's been eight years and I never knew about it," or, unless they've been disputing it for eight years.
Well, part of the problem, there was, it was not, it was hard to get notices because once the houses were gone, there was, there was nowhere to send the notices to, for the county side.
Okay.
On item O, Peter, this is a Peter question. Um, this deals-
Zero or O?
O.
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, I don't want, I don't want their, I don't want an ID ten T error to occur. Right? Uh, Peter, this deals with the tri-party agreement for downtown housing incentive, um, and this is for what's termed the Old Swetman Drugstore on Howard Avenue. I was looking through there, I was trying to determine how much, uh, was the incentive grant for. There're gonna be, I guess, two living spaces upstairs, two apartments, if you will, or whatever, and I, I know that the incentive can, could be as much as twenty-five thousand per unit, but I didn't see anything to see how much it was gonna be per unit, and I, I looked, but, you know, I can't find mustard in the refrigerator sometimes, and it's in a bright yellow container, so.
In the agreement, it says, uh, it's fifty thousand dollars for the two new, two new housing units.
So it's, it's a total of fifty thousand, we assume? It's the twenty-five thou-
Twenty-five thousand per residential unit.
Thank you, sir.
Should that be listed separately, Peter? Up to, it ended up to twenty-five thousand, not automatically twenty-five thousand, is it?
Right. This was not automatic. It is up to twenty-five thousand, but based on this project, uh, Main Street, in their minutes, and they're reviewing it, and the amount of money they've put into this, uh, they felt unanimously that it- it applied for $25,000 per unit, and the administration would agree with that.
Now, with the Main Street Board?
Yes.
And who's going to handle the money?
We're going to do this just like we did with the Fritz, it's the same procedure. Once they proceed with the project, and once they get the certificates of occupancy, the city earmarks it to Main Street, and Main Street then will make the payments of the grant and monitor, monitor the grant arrangement throughout the five years that they need to keep it rented.
They don't have anybody on that board, does it? Who's capable of doing it? Do we hire the CPA to do that?
They've hired their own CPA, Main Street has. I think Pat Wiley's here to answer any questions on that, but...
And so we paying for the CPA? Who's paying for the CPA?
Main Street pays for that. As part of this, when they applied for this grant, they put in $500 for the application fee, and that's Main Street's fee in this. Their accounting services for the year, I think they're looking at $2,000, $2,000 to $3,000 for their accounting services. That's already been budgeted on their end. I think last year, or the year before, we provided some seed money for them for some accounting services, so there's nothing new from us coming for any accounting services, though.
Well, just any time you send any money through a nonprofit, we've got to make sure it's done right.
Right.
It's not that easy to do, so it's just something you've got to check out, make sure that every step taken correctly.
I agree.
And I know they have to hire someone outside of that board to do that. That's not what they do, you know? So that's why we always check on that. Those are the steps that have got to be taken correctly, right here.
Just A, and I know Nathan would have brought this up had he been here today. Unfortunately, he can't be. So I want to ask about Key Impact and Keith Hurd. Do we have any recent updates regarding any accomplishments? I know we were paying him $10,000 a month, or his group, and this has been reduced to $7,500, so I want to know why.
Right, well, this is, again, you know, we're in the middle of a couple of things that we need to do in Washington, in the connections that, again, Councilman Guines had talked about, you know, the value of, and this has been going on, you know, for a while, but this three-month situation would help us with MEMA, the FEMA, the obligation, I think, and this is a perfect result. But also with the Gomez and some of these other functions that I think you'll see some success here during this week, and so it's to, you know, again, cross the Ts and dot the Is with, you know, in the short term for these projects, and, you know, I think you'll see some, but this is, I think, a perfect example of what we need to do in, you know, with these kinds of representation. So I encourage you to support, you know, I can...
I get that, and I just didn't know, he had given us a generic list at one point. I didn't know if we've got any recent updates, and then I also wanted to know why his value was reduced to $7,500 versus $10,000.
Well, it wasn't just a total monthly representation, as it was with regard to...
Is he doing less? That's what I'm asking.
Well, we're more focused on some issues that I would, you know, update, you know, with Gomez, with Thailand, with, you know, again, the Washington, the things that is ongoing. So, and not so much, just, hey, this would get us through some specific topics. And he's agreed to, you know...
Mr. Leonard, I know you held up the number six. I don't know if that meant something else in sign language, or if it just simply meant the number six.
I was just saying that the mayor just negotiated a better rate.
Well, I mean, it's, hey, these are some specific topics that we need you to pitch, and again, this is a perfect example, that, you know, not going to the legislature every day, you know, it's a little bit different, because it's not, legislature's not in session, but this ongoing thing with Gomez and Thailand and these other things, you know, the BP money, it requires some specific focus, yeah.
Is he contributing to the Bonn-Carry spillway issue at all?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a pretty serious focus.
I can pretty much answer a little bit of that, and yes, I could say yes. We had an opportunity, Gerald, to go in and speak with the group, along with the Louisiana group, about the Bonn-Carry spillway. I think the mayor went up there like a month before, a couple of weeks before, and then we went right behind him. And of course, our main mission was to ensure that we didn't lose that $8 million. And so not only from $8 million, but you're talking about, we have 11 million reasons to hold on to them, along with bringing more project management money. Because, as you know, they didn't fund us. When the project got extended, we didn't get project management money. And so we got an opportunity now to bank in a little bit more, several more million dollars, to at least pay for the rest of this project. So if you're asking me if it's worth the few dollars we give them, it's worth its weight in gold, and right now we can't afford to lose that tie that we have.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Going back to that, I'd like to see what he's working on now besides what y'all done. Did y'all get one of them?
Yeah.
Yes. I can email it to you.
No, I don't want no email, I want to piece of paper I can read. I don't want any more emails. I've seen a bunch of generic emails, don't mean nothing. I want to find what somebody's actually doing, we're paying money to, and we're getting our money, but that's the key with all these things. You know, everything we deal with is somebody else's money.
You can be with me Friday, and I'll, just come with me Friday.
But I'd just like to know what these people we're paying a ton of money are, are they working? You know? I could find y'all. I ain't never seen this guy, couldn't tell you. He could be sitting in a room right now. I don't know what he looks like.
Let me ask, what would it take to convince you?
Say again?
What would it take to convince you? What's the balance? You know, I'm, look, I'm telling you, my assessment, we cannot do without this kind of service, and in this specifically set of conditions, nobody could provide that better than Key Impact Studies. I mean, I can tell you, you know, so, I mean, either, you know, you have something wrong with him, or you think we could do it better in-house, or you, you know, you just have a problem with him. So, I mean, I need to, do you think we don't need this kind of service?
No, I tell you that, I tell you that from the beginning.
No, I asked you a question. Did you think we don't need this kind of service?
I told you from the beginning, we did. I told you it was overpriced. I said, I was not making concerns.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you on that.
I thought it was overpriced from the beginning. Went from $3,000 to $10,000 a month. That's a pretty juicy increase. That was my problem. Okay, what? No, well, it went to, what, we did it how long? For $10,000. And I started filing.
That was level where you confused.
But I'm just saying. So that was my problem, not having somebody up there.
Well, you know, again, it's our opinion, based on, this is the best representation we can get.
Any items you'd like to discuss, Mr. Guines?
Yeah, on B?
Mr. Guine?
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm ready.
Go ahead, let Mr. Lawrence finish.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. You went to Washington. You're a Ford. You're a Ford. You went to Washington. I didn't go to Washington. I went to Bankley once.
Wow.
Item B?
B, yeah.
B is in boy.
Exactly what are we doing here, or what are we going out there, for what?
Are we talking about B as in Bravo?
Yeah, B like in boy.
B is in boy. Okay, got it.
B and boy.
We're submitting a grant application to repair City Hall. We last proposed to submit a grant application back in 2009. It was reviewed but denied. In the meantime, we're another decade older, and we've got an update from the guy that did the inspection 10 years ago. He tells us we needed $646,000 to repair the structural integrity of this building. The marble, if you get, look at the pictures I could share with you, we've got places where the marble is coming apart, where there's actually gorgos up on the top of the building that could easily fall, come loose and fall.
And there's some very specific things that you can't use bleach to get rid of some of these things, and, you know, there's very strict guidelines on what you can do to touch this building.
It's needed, but I can tell you, Councilman, it's a long shot, there's not a lot of money in this kitty, and we haven't competed well in the past. We hope now that we're 10 years older, maybe in a little worse shape, maybe we'll have a shot at this money.
That was my thing, believe it or not, you two, I'm all for this. I don't understand why we was ever denied the first time. They're supposed to be protecting old buildings like this, so how could you ever deny this particular building? That's what I don't understand. So I don't know why they're going to do it now, just because we're 10 years older? But I'm just saying, this is one of these buildings that you can't replace, and they're supposed to be restoring and helping people do this, and they turned us down. I mean, that don't make sense to me. That's my biggest problem. No, it needs to take care of the side, and the marble, stuff like that.
Got to get us a better lobbyist this year.
Oh, we've got to have Keith Hurd. Oh, no, well, okay, he went to Washington with, he went to Washington with Felix. That's my thing, I'm not against it at all. And I know we apply for another one, Mike, you and I talked about applying for the Sanger. Can we just keep applying for a bunch of these grants till we actually get some of them? I know we can't get both of these grants, but applying for the Sanger, do we have a shot at getting either one of them?
Well, it's unlikely that we would get both of them. There's not that much money in that historical, it will pay out each year, but we're submitting, as you remember, on the Sanger, and let's see, what item is this?
That's on J. J is the one about the Sanger.
Yeah, the Sanger. As you recall, we have a Sanger project that's funded right now, you know, $2.1 or so million. We could not award the final bid item, which was the repointing and sealing of the exterior. This grant application is asking for the money to do that last section of the work. So what's at play now is we'll have a grant application into the archives and history for $635,000, and in parallel, we've asked for $2 million from MDA as part of the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, and, you know, we've made the first cut on that one. So it, I'm not sure, you know, we don't need both of these grants, but we're asking for both of them, and hopefully we'll get one of the two.
If you get both, you refuse one?
We're just throwing everything that we can at the fence and hoping something, at the wall, and seeing something sticks.
I don't see anything else there. Dixie, why you on break? We talked about downtown.
Why you looking?
I'm an ex Chief Miller. Just the one with the tied in with Mobile and all that? You got to be, I'm sure you must be in favor of this.
We're not sure about how much money we're going to get yet, but we are going to be the administrators of the grant. We cleared that with the company, and Mobile didn't have, surprisingly, they didn't have any objections to that. So it'll be a grant between us and Mobile and overseen by us. We're not sure about the exact amount yet, but it'll have to be used for cameras.
It'd be good for us. And you would handle it, would you say?
If we're going to handle it, it's going to be good for us.
Mobile's not a big enough town to handle anything. They're kind of like Gulfport. They can't do it, we got to do it.
What now?
We're always good for that.
No, they require that one agency be the administrator.
Always do a good job, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, the last thing I would ask, the things y'all added on is $107,000 on the two things we just, we just did budget, and all of a sudden we're adding and amending the budget. How come these things wasn't already in the budget with the bond and paying a light bill for the electric bill for the...
There are two items there, Councilman. We're asking to amend the budget. First one is, as you know, we pay the county to do the taxes work for us, and that comes in, they send us a bill every once in a while, and we pay them. Well, we just got the bill.
What?
And it's more than what we had in the budget, so we got to put some more money in the...
So we got to overbill?
Thirty-seven thousand, $250,000 we got to put in, take out of the general fund and put into the administrative account to pay for that bill. That's to pay the county for doing our tax work. The second one is a budget amendment moving money in Parks and Recs between their salary account and the supplies account, so they can pay their final electric bill of the month, which came in higher than was in that account. So we're not taking money out of the general fund, we're just moving money between the salaries account and the services or supplies account. So that's, why is that coming in? You know, we just got the bill. We got to pay it out of this year, but it's in, we've got the money, it's just in the wrong bucket.
So you use it now.
So we're going to use it now. Otherwise, it's generally in most of the departments, I know they don't like this, in most of the departments, there is money left in their salary accounts at the end of the year because we have gaps and vacancies as we move through the year, and rarely do they spend over their salary amounts. Usually there's a little, at the end of the year, this is one of the places we tend to take money from when we needed for something else to pay another bill, is from the salary account. In this case, Parks and Recs had a great deal of surge turnover this year, and they had extra money in their salary account, and we're using it to pay the electrical bill.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate you standing up and all this stuff.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anytime.
Anything else? Nothing else from the council? All in favor of the consent?
I'm going to teach them that alpha.
Unanimous vote with exception, Glavine?
Yeah, and I just want to explain why, though, I wanted to end the record. I still got a problem with V, you know, because it seems like this piece of property was owned by Knoc or however you pronounce his name. We could never serve proper notice to him, and so we had a special assessment put on the property to remove some of the structures, which we did and completed. Another person bought the property or paid the taxes, and we're expecting to make a gain on paying those taxes and is now the new owner of the property, correct? Correct?
I think Mr. Knoc got foreclosed on by Mr. Quang, so Mr. Quang is the current owner.
So he got foreclosed on by the new owner, and, you know, we did some work, and I don't know how we can just waive the work for removing that structure.
To your point, if Mr. Knoc, if we can still locate him, if we're having to repay this $5,000, we could look into pursuing a collection action against Mr. Knoc, because we have no statute of limitations with the city.
Okay, will council pursue that?
If he's fundable and if it's, if he's alive, and if it's collectible, sure.
Okay, thank you. That's the reason, and it's okay, I mean, we can move forward, but that's just the reason for my decision, I can't.
The question I'd like to have, Peter, is should we actually be involved in that, or is that between them two first? The two owners against each other. I mean, should they settle that before we get involved in it?
Well, the other thing to do is filing an action in Chancery Court and having a big Chancery Court hearing on whether the tax sale was valid or not, and this is essentially, we're trying to get to the same place. We need to clear the title to this, and this is the way to clear the title.
My thing is, all that stuff, you're talking about eight, seven years old. This stuff should have been settled before it ever this long, you know?
Right. It is not uncommon on these tax sales that things have happened 10 years ago, and 95% of them are, there's a defect in the notice, and they're always subject to being set aside. That's why most people don't buy properties that have come through tax sales.
So you're saying we do have a legal say in this?
Absolutely.
The city and the council, I mean?
Sure, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But doesn't special assessments revert back to the new owner of properties normally? Don't they, aren't they liable for special assessments if they acquire the property?
Be this is first cause.
Or taxes, back taxes, or special assessments?
When he acquired this property, there was, he may well have acquired it subject to that lien, but not subject to the special assessment, because it had been cleared once we received it, but it's...
All right, thank you.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote with Glavine against V as a victor, and George is against A as an apple. Move on to code enforcement hearings?
Item A on the agenda, 240 Benaki Avenue, that case has been resolved.
Way to go, Jerry.
Way to go, Jerry. One for one, Dad.
Okay, said resolved, resolved? All right, time of motion on the routine? Motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. All, any discussion?
Yeah, we got two of y'all. Let's, somebody give us a good report here. We want a front row and a back row report. This must be good, you had to sit down.
No, they always getting on to me for not speaking in the microphone. We got $200,000, I think it's $80,000 yesterday, or today. And I'm left to understand that we have another $100,000 in the pipeline, and before MEMA right now, they're reviewing $1.7 million. That should enter the pipeline at some point. So that's where we're at.
So the 1.7, what, what they reviewing for?
That's...
There was something wrong? They just ain't doing it? So it's nothing, all right. Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other, other discussion? All in favor of the routine? Unanimous votes? Do I have a motion to...
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale. Second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote, meeting adjourned.